With our pledges of allegiance.
Yes, Mr. Board President, tonight we have Angel Crumbly and you will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And now for the Texas pledge.
Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one invisible.
Yes, Mr. Board President, first we have Mr. Lachardi, Principal at Reach High School.
Well, good evening, President Romo, Superintendent Smith Faulkner, and esteemed members of the Board of Education. It is my pleasure tonight to share with you our stories at Reach. So here is how we have shown to grow better together at Reach this school year. So for one, we started off the school year strong with our Meet the Teacher event. We had an opportunity to meet our students for the first time, as well as their families and set up plans for their success. Also, we've leveraged real family engagement opportunities. For one, fun event was our Food Fun and FAFSA event, which invited students and families to come together, to basically fellowship together, as well as discuss some next steps post-secondary school. Lastly, we've leveraged and continue to leverage families and the community through our site-based decision-making committee. Those are meetings that we have over the school year, as you well know. Always, the drive for this is looking out for what's best for our students. So I have the privilege of inviting three students to share their before and after stories with you. I first invite Arabella Brady.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Arabella Brady. I myself can say that Reach has been a true blessing to me, for me, and for my story. Before Reach, I had lost touch with reality. I was borderline depressed and I was suffering from anxiety. I had no will to try. I made the decision to attend Reach. Since then, I have been beyond blessed, not only by the staff, the students, and the school itself, but the experience that came with it. Reach has a safe place to learn, to grow, to prosper, and to achieve your highest potential. We would be here all day if I wanted to detail about the turnaround that Reach has blessed me with. What I can say, Reach has taught me that I can in fact reach my full potential. For this, I would like to thank all my teachers for sticking with me even on my bad days. A huge thank you to Mr. Lachardi for never failing to believe in me and put a smile on my face. I would even like to thank those who didn't believe in me. He even taught me a valuable lesson. Most importantly, thank you to my mom for never giving up on me and never letting me quit. I would like to turn it over to Alex.
Good afternoon. My name is Alex Aguilar, and before attending Reach, my life felt very hopeless, and I was unmotivated and very uncertain about what my future had in store for me. I did not believe that I was going to be successful. Since starting at Reach, I've experienced a strong change in emotions. My mental health has started to slowly improve, and I feel much more motivated to do my work. I have slowly started making more friends, and I have a larger support system through Reach. I'm thankful and glad to have the position I have in my school. The teachers are understanding and work their best to accommodate the needs of the students. I feel like Reach gave me a second chance, and I'm happy to be a student at the school, because not everyone has that chance or opportunity. Reach has helped to improve my life so much in the short amount of time that I've been attending the school. I'm grateful to the teachers, staff, and students who are helping me accomplish my goals and aspirations. I would like to pass it on to Jose.
Good evening. My name is Jose Flores. Tonight, I would like to talk a little bit about how Reach has been a complete gift to me. Before attending Reach, I was a drug addict of seven years, as well as a gang member and a high school dropout. It was throwing my life away, down the drain. But one day, I ended up in a men's home where God had completely did 180 in my life. Not only have I just been accomplished, one year sober, I now have a good head on my shoulders, as well as more out and about through Victory Church. Not only that, I have a new family, the Reach family. Throughout this year, God has been opening up doors I thought were closed for good, school being one of them. You know, Reach has been such a blessing to me, not only because of the new family I have accomplished, I have received, but because I am now able to get a high school diploma where at one point of my life, I thought was impossible. As I work with so many, I would like to take a little bit of time to thank, you know, all the teachers and staff who are at the Reach, always encouraging me, always pushing me forward. I would as well like to thank some people outside of the Reach family who also encouraged me. You know, my mother figure, of course, Ms. Anna Sanamone, who's currently right, not right here, but you know, I'd like to thank her, as well as my home director and father figure, Jorge Torres. Another father figure I see as Mr. David Tucker. And I would also like to thank one other, one I'd like to bring up to the spotlight, one Reach student named Clarva Avalos, who, you know, really pushed me. All these people have really pushed and really encouraged me to keep pushing forward, really investing their time to ensure that I have a bright future. Together, I did this. Together, we did this. And I would like to reintroduce Mr. Lachardi up to the podium.
Thanks for your inspirational stories, and always wanted to, you know, bring the family members, and we have two parents here, to share what Reach in fact means to them. And it's my privilege to invite Ms. Markano and her son to the podium, Michael Ruiz.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Amanda Markano. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Lachardi and his team for giving Michael a chance to join the CISD family. We're out of district transfer students. He is a first-year student at Reach, and honestly, I could not be more proud. Michael was very shy, timid, and unsure of his future. Ms. Lachardi, Ms. Mahalitz, and the faculty at Reach High School took Michael in as a high-risk student. The reassurance they have given him has allowed Michael to excel not only academically, but building his confidence, self-worth. I'm gonna cry. His confidence, self-worth has blossomed, starting in school as a second-year freshman with little to no drive. Reach High School has gone above and beyond to reassure all their students that they are doing great. I have seen the growth in my son and wouldn't change anything. His attitude, his maturity, his mental growth has done nothing but make me smile. Reach has shown Michael that growth can be done at any speed. Michael has improved tremendously. He went from failing every class to not caring, to being ahead in all his academics, being recognized for his dedication, hard work, and to being on the road to graduating a year early. I would also like to take the moment to let you guys know that not only has this district made him improve his performance in high school, but also made his whole life at home turn 180. He talks to me more, he respects everybody around him, and he's very, very driven. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to introduce Ms. Brady.
Thank you, and at this time, I would like to invite Ms. Brady to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, Castleberry School Board. How are y'all? My name is Rebecca Brady, and my daughter Arabella Brady is a graduating senior of Reach. Arabella began her high school adventure during the height of COVID, and the transition to in-person learning to home where she was learning remotely was, as any of us can imagine, a difficult transition. When we transitioned back into the classroom, there were some difficulties that Bella experienced, and she mentioned that she would like to graduate early and start her future endeavors. And so, we were able to get her into Reach, and during that time, there were some difficulties that Bella experienced physically, emotionally, mentally. The transition was difficult, as you can imagine, for most of our students. And the Reach team was so kind and so empathetic and so considerate, and really took the time to get to know Bella and figure out a process that would be best for her. It wasn't an easy road, but Arabella has excelled tremendously. And as the other mother mentioned, it's been a 180. Her attitude has changed at home, her trajectory has moved in a positive direction. She is involved in the community through Reach, and she has aspirations for her future that she might not have had in the past. The staff has been instrumental in communicating with me as a parent. They're very kind, they build Arabella up. They send out emails intentionally just to let us know what's going on with her schoolwork and how well she's doing. And I think that speaks really highly of them as a staff to take that individual time to care. Being in school has really helped her. Being in front of the students, in front of the teachers, it's just been, it's just been, like she said, a 180, but it's been up night and day. So I want to personally thank Mrs. Bythers, all of the teachers, Mr. Lachardi, Ms. Ojeda, who wouldn't, school wouldn't run without her, for all of their hard work and their kindness. Reach is one of the most phenomenal programs that I've ever personally been a part of, and I have three daughters, and my oldest is 22, so I've been in the ISDs for a while. And I just want to tell you, thank you. Thank you for having this program. It means a lot to these students, and as you can tell, it's turning lives around for the better. Thank you all.
So clearly, we have more than a handful of students here that you see here. So we put together a little bit of a video of what Reach means to our student body. So with that said, I thank the students here and shout out some other students that we have from Reach. If you would kindly stand, and staff as well, and any other parents, please stand and be acknowledged as well for your work. And clearly, to the board, we appreciate you, each of you, and your continued support, belief, and recognition for us. Thank you.
So Reach students, in my 14 years of being on the board, I don't know if we've ever had students come up and share their emotions and how much courage that took. So thank you very much for sharing. You're an inspiration, and not only to your fellow students, but anybody that comes in contact with you. So thank you for what you're doing. We're so proud of you and the direction that you're going, and we wish you the best success in your future endeavors. So thank you again. Are we good? No, let's keep going. Let's keep going.
So our next recognition is our Fine Arts Department, and that's Mr. Moss, Director of Fine Arts. We'll introduce some students. Oh, maybe not. Maybe we have someone else.
Good evening, President Romo, Superintendent Smith Faulkner, and Board of Education. My name is Melissa Tobias, and I am representing CISD Fine Arts. It is always an honor to come before you all to share all the positive things that are happening in CISD Fine Arts. Did you know that CISD Fine Arts has performed and presented at over 75 events, and has prepared for a total of 1,075 collective hours as artistic ambassadors within our district and throughout our community to create important connections that truly make us all better together? The tremendous support and opportunities that you all have given us to become the very best versions of ourselves does not go unnoticed. And we are truly grateful for all you do for CISD Fine Arts. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deshaun Busby, and I'm here to represent the CISC Choir Program. Being a part of choir has helped me grow as a musician and make some core memories. Last year, I was a freshman, and I made the All-Region Choir, and it was one of the most memorable experiences I've had in high school so far. I was able to sing with the best of the best, make friends with other musicians and with other schools, and represent Castleberry with pride. This year, we've been given some exciting performance opportunities. Our varsity women just sang at the Substitute Appreciation Dinner. Our IMMS Choir sang at the Annual Christmas Dinner. And our CHS and IMMS Choir combined sang the National Anthem at the Varsity Football Game for the first time. I am at, IMMS is... We're getting ready to perform our winter concert this evening, oh my god, this Tuesday. We're preparing for our UIL season and the spring, and we're hopefully to have a successful year. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Isabel Mendez, and this is...
Samantha Torres.
We are representing CISC Mariachi as president and vice president of our organization. We have had several performances throughout the semester that have given us the ability to enhance the campus life at CHS and IMMS, along with making important connections in our community.
Some memorable experiences include performing for all campuses during the Hispanic Heritage Month opening day, Fort Worth Botanical Gardens, and the annual CISD Christmas Dinner. We're preparing for all-region auditions in UIL in January. Mariachi has given me a sense of belonging. It's a place where I can connect with my heritage and my friends. I am proud to be a Hispanic and a Mariachi. Mariachi allows me to share my music with the world. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Cortez, and this is Edwin Fernandez, and we are representing the CISC Theater. The CHS Lion Theater had so much fun collaborating with the CHS Art for our annual Haunted House. We also prepared our fall show, Dearly Departed, which was a huge success.
IMMS also had an amazing fall show titled Theater One Showcase, which featured all sixth and seventh grade theater students. IMMS Theater also presented their winter show, Who Will Be the Next North Pole Star? They also collaborated with all three elementary schools to perform their winter show for every fifth grader in the district. Both CHS and IMMS Theater programs are preparing for UIL one-act play next semester and the UIL Theatrical Design Competition. We are looking forward to a wonderful second semester. Thank you. I'm also representing the CISC Art Department. So art has had an outstanding first semester. The year started with three CHS students' artworks being selected to be displayed at the annual Tazza Tasby Convention for the first time ever. We also had some beautiful artwork from our elementaries, IMMS, and CHS for the annual Red Ribbon Week poster contest. They will be displayed for the next round of competition at the Lions Club District Convention hosted at IMMS in January. CISC also purchased a wonderful new curriculum that will help align our pre-K through 12th visual art programs. Our biggest goal for CISC is to apply to be selected as a TAEA, District of Distinction, for the first time in our district's history. If selected next September, we will be one of the only 4A districts to be selected. We are thrilled to begin work on the Visual Arts Galactic Event Competition next semester for all campuses. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Melissa Tobias, and I was the head drum major for the Castleberry Lion Band. Throughout our entire band career, there have been countless of memorable experiences that have shaped each of us into who we are today. We would not have been able to do any of these experiences if it was not for our amazing Lion Band boosters. They spend hours raising funds, working concessions, serving meals, and collaborating with our directors to optimize our success. Our band boosters are a shining example of how our parents come together to make our program better together.
Good evening. My name is Ariana Nariso, and I was a senior drum major for the Lion Band. This program is a place for us to expand our musical knowledge and skills while also building long-lasting relationships. It has given us opportunities and experiences that we wouldn't have been able to have if we were not a part of this program.
Hello. My name is Olivia Cortez, and I was a senior drum major this year. We received a Division One Rating Award from every judge at the UIL marching competition. We were also able to go to Liberty Hill for the UIL area marching competition and compete against some of the best bands in our classification. We were able to travel for so many competitions and games and make so many memories on and off the field and stage.
Good evening. My name is Fatima Rodriguez, and I was the junior drum major for the Lion Band. We are excited to prepare for the UIL Concert Insight Reading Contest in the spring. We will also submit for the ATSSB Outstanding Performance Series and the National Mark of Excellence Concert Band Competition for the first time ever. Thank you.
As you can see, CISD Fine Arts is thriving due to the combined support of our CISD Board of Education, our wonderful administration, staff, and community. Better Together is not just a slogan for CISD Fine Arts. It is an intentional act that we strive to live out every day. At this time, we would like to ask our amazing fine arts staff and parents to stand as we thank them for their support. This is the reason we are all better together. Thank you.
And again, on behalf of the board, you guys are truly amazing. Seeing you guys perform out in public, going to the theater programs, the artwork displays at the Tasby-Tasla Convention was amazing. It makes us proud when we're out there, and you guys are to be commended on what you do, not only in the school, but outside of school, because I know what it takes to continue to practice and be as good as you guys are. And thank you all very much for what you do.
We have, I truly believe we have an amazing fine arts program in Castleberry, and I will say, I did travel out to Liberty Hill, and I'm sure I just disagree with the judges and where we ended up. Just know, we're working on that, right? So congratulations on all of your accomplishments. Thank you.
Okay, I believe we have another group, Athletics?
Yes, I believe Dee Dee Pierce.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the CISC Board of Education and Ms. Smith Faulkner for the opportunity to recognize the accomplishments and life lessons of the Castleberry High School Fall Sports Programs and our student athletic trainers. I also have the privilege of recognizing our outstanding employees that do an incredible job with our student athletes. At this time, our athletic training program will start us off. I would like to introduce Rick Redden, who is our head athletic trainer. Rick is in his first year of being the head athletic trainer for Castleberry ISD. Last year, he served as the COVID tracer for the district. Rick is in his 27th year as a certified athletic trainer. He has been recognized on the national, district, and local level for contributions to the field of athletic training. Rick is married to Christy, a nurse, and they have one son who coaches in a neighboring district. Tonight, our students will introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about their experiences in their programs.
My name is Ashley Espinoza. I am a junior. I'm in the medical career pathway, and athletic training has given me the opportunity to see injuries and learn about how to treat them. These firsthand experiences are something I can learn in a classroom.
My name is Ronnie Ortega, and I am a junior. That advice I would give to a new Castleberry Athletic Training student would be to make sure you are dedicated to the program and willing to put in the work. It is rewarding because we get to help our fellow student athletes meet and network with our CHS staff, administrators, and students from other schools. We also learn many things that relate to the healthcare and the human body.
Hello. My name is Alexa Arbizu, and I'm a sophomore. Castleberry Athletic Training has enabled me to be a more outgoing person. Being a trainer has helped me with my communication skills and has allowed me to come out of my shell. I love to help people out in any way that I can. Athletic training has taught me that doing things for others, even if it's something small, can really change and impact things as a whole.
Up next is our volleyball program. I would like to introduce Deana Adzenhofer. Coach Adzenhofer has six years of experience in education and coaching. She is in her fourth year as the head volleyball coach and the head girls' track coach, and she also serves as our girls' athletic coordinator. She is currently teaching Business Information Management II within the CTE program. Coach Adzenhofer and her wife Meredith have four children, Emerson, who is seven, and seven-month-old triplets, Griffin, Barrett, and Casey.
Good evening. My name is Anna Medina, and I am a senior. I was asked what Castleberry volleyball meant to me, and to me, Castleberry volleyball means togetherness and overcoming obstacles. This season has had many ups and downs, both on and off the court, but together as a team, we knew we had to come together in order to play to our full potential. We learned that no matter our differences, we had one common goal, to do our very best for each other. As a team, we were able to see what we were capable of, striving to always be 1% better each time.
My name is Jacqueline Ortiz, and I am a senior. Castleberry volleyball has allowed me to become a better leader, not only on the court, but outside of it, in the real world. It has given me more confidence in myself and has allowed me to see the program as not only a sport or game, but as a family and a community. People, as a senior, I'm so thankful for this program that I got to be a part of, and I hope the upcoming underclassmen get to have the same experiences.
Hi. My name is Daniela Benitez. I'm a senior. When I was a freshman, I never would have guessed that as a senior, I would consider my volleyball team a part of my family. While we've had our ups and downs, these experiences have helped me mold myself into who I am now. As we grow up and become adults, it's important to learn life lessons like time management and punctuality. And in this volleyball program, you learn these things, and they can affect your future. In this program, you learn to become a leader and to work as a team. Thank you.
Next is our football program. I'd like to introduce Juan Silva. Coach Silva is in his 24th year of teaching and coaching. He just finished his fourth football season at Castleberry, and also serves as our head boys' track coach and the boys' athletic coordinator. He is certified as a CTE teacher and has taught digital graphics and video production. He is married to his wife Rachel and has four children, Chandler, Matt, AJ, who is a senior at CHS, and Candace, who's a seventh grader at Irma Marsh.
Hello. My name is Pedro Martinez, and I'm a senior. For me, Castleberry football is a family. During the season, we spend most of our time together. We practice, eat, travel, and play together. We built friendships and learned lessons that will last us a lifetime. Whether we're celebrating our highs or going through the lows, we always stay together, and that is what a true family is.
My name is Daniel Hasso. I'm a senior. The best advice I can offer is embrace every single minute you get to be a part of the program, because not every practice or game is guaranteed. You have to work hard daily and always be sure to leave everything out on the field. You don't want to give in or give up. Fight through the gut checks because it makes coming out on the other side even sweeter. Remember, save your your time in football because it will be over before you know it.
Hello, my name is Carlos Salas, and I'm a senior. Castleberry football has taught me so many life lessons and helped me grow as a person. It has taught me that things will be difficult, you will be an underdog, and people will doubt you. But if you, if you continue to grind every day and are physically and mentally motivated, you will persevere and become successful. Nothing in life will be handed to you, nothing in life will be handed to you, and the blood, sweat, and tears that you put into anything make your accomplishments that much sweeter.
Next is our cross-country program. Coach Beasley is in his 23rd year of teaching and coaching and his 18th year at CHS. He serves as our head cross-country coach, as well as our head boys' basketball coach. Coach Beasley also teaches honors world geography. He is married to his wife Patty, and they have three children, Brooke, Sam, and Lily. In his time as the cross-country coach, the CHS cross-country team has won 16 team district championships, have qualified for regionals as a team 17 times, where they have won three regional championships, have qualified for the state championship as a team seven times, including one state runner-up finish, and have also produced 14 individual district champions. Tonight, we have one of our athletes that qualified for the regional cross-country meet in Lubbock. I had the privilege to watch her run at regionals, where she represented Castleberry very well and competed like a champion.
Good evening, my name is Alimar Mojica, I'm a senior. I was asked what cross-country meant to me. Cross- Castleberry cross-country means family, excellence, strength, effort, and confidence. Family, because we have a great coach that motivates us on the course academically and personally. Excellence, since we strive for excellence in every aspect. Strength, because we push ourselves to finish every one, every run, hard with every stride we take. Effort, because although we struggle with personal highs and lows, we look past it with the help of our team and coaches. We show up early every morning to make the best of it. Confidence is built within our team. Every meet, it is key to cheer, yell, motivate, and run with and for each other. We are always united, and we are proud of the team unity we have established. Thank you.
These are some great testaments of what Castleberry Athletics stands for. We have a phenomenal coaching staff. These coaches always credit the great group of young men and women that we have the privilege to work with on a daily basis as the reason why they continue to coach. We would also like to recognize any parents or family members that might be here tonight. If you are the parent or or family member of any of these outstanding students or coaches, would you please stand? On the behalf of the Department of Athletics, we would like to say thank you to the board and Ms. Smith Faulkner for your dedication and commitment and support for these athletic programs. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share with you tonight about the accomplishments and life lessons of those athletic trainers and the student athletes. Thank you.
Again, on behalf of the board, two things. One, thank you for being model students, and thank you for being wonderful athletes and representing Castleberry the way that you do, on and off the court, the field, whatever sport you're playing in, on the track, things like that. You guys, every one of you, each group out here today is truly amazing, and that's what makes our job so much fun up here, is getting to see the the testaments from you guys, the students that come up and and give their stories, the dedication and the hard work. It does not go unnoticed. So keep doing what you're doing, you're going to be successful, and thank you again for representing Castleberry in the way that you do.
So I want to let all the students know how proud I am, and it's hard to talk and have a dry eye, right? And be able to talk after hearing all of the great things that you guys have shared with us. Teachers, thank you for your time, coaches, band directors, I've worked with you guys, I know how much time that you give to our students. Parents, thank you for hanging in there with us and supporting your students. I see many of you at the events, and I've gotten to know you. Seniors, I've worked with some of you guys on the superintendent committee and in other capacity, and so it's going to be really hard to see you walking across the stage because that's going to happen real fast. So just know that we are incredibly proud of the Castleberry family, and we thank you for all you, everything that you do, and we are so proud of your accomplishments.
So so now what we'll do is we'll get each group up here, we'll start with the the Reach students, then we'll go to the Fine Arts, and then the athletes. We'll do pictures with the group, and then when they're done, we'll go to the next one. And parents, please take all the pictures you would like. Ms. Branch will take the official photograph for the webpage and things like that, so, and we will have a couple of board members down there in the group picture as well.